Okay, you might serve me back.
Okay.
Okay. Sound check, sound check, sound check. Yeah, I think we'll start off probably about six oh five to six oh seven, just to let a few more people come in if that works. All right, folks, thanks for coming. We're gonna get started around six oh five to six oh seven. It's about four minutes out.
My name is James Baker. I'm with the City Council Zoo and tonight we're gonna present a project plan and hold a public hearing on our fiscal year 2026 Clean Water Safety Revolving Fund project plan. We've gotta submit a project plan that describes a project that we intend to finance and explain why it is necessary to get to that in the project justification. We also must allow for the public an opportunity to comment and review the project. The project plan has been on file at the City Clerk's office and it has also been openly available that you can access that. We're here tonight to hold a public hearing and to present fixed amount of money available and so each municipality that gets approved gets those dollars. So those dollars will have to land each year based on a project to each individual city or municipality that's requesting those projects. So this is a very competitive program, so there's gonna be more cities applying for these funds that funds aren't available. And it's allowed for for the public county. Our highest, our most critical of all the projects we had in our water design project plan and our base water, base water C F A. As we heard, we talked about project descriptions and justifications. We had one project that we talked about. It's our Calm's Water Reclamation Plan Sustainable Biosalads Alternative that had a further group that wanted a deeper dive into the project justification. This group was a good governance team. It was made up of representatives, tasker, vetting, reviewing biosalads project alternatives. Those that participated in that project evaluation justification included City Calm Zoo, City Calm Green, City Portage, Charleston Township, Charter Township, Cooper Charter Township, Pellic Sewer Water Authority, Carney New Home, Lightman, Calm Zoo County, Oshlo Charter Township, Richland Township, Texas Charter Township, County Department of Public Safety, Bell's Brewery, Pfizer, and Havering. We'd like to thank all those municipalities, firms, or individuals that helped to participate in the evaluation for the biosalads project alternative. The bio- The process of re-heat from that oxidized material, so that heat that we use in that process, in fact, there's also some additional heat that would be used offline from that process as well. The project in hand will enhance the city's role to preserve biosalads processing site for surrounding communities that may be facing PFAS issues as well as other biosalads as well as options. The critical project component will enable the city to mitigate risks from reliance on external contract contracts, achieve significant cost savings, reduce environmental impacts, and handle the contaminants of those concern by PFAS we've talked about while addressing the biosalad demand and needs of a Calm Zoo water recovery system plan. So if we compare that to just a dryer, so a dryer only facility. Handle through like an E V C air control. Dry material, benefit of the drying of biosalads is that that dry material is essentially inert, easy to handle, easy to convey, and then once it is dry, it does not have that forward signature. Dryers require a second amount of natural gas they burn, you know, including greenhouse gas emissions. So what we're talking about is that as an alternative, we had just a dryer, not a dryer, the E R S. The E R S solves these, these issues on target. The dryer alone will also not destroy PFAS or other contaminants of the earth in concern. Dryers significantly reduce biosalads volume and spoils of cause for remaining material still containing contaminants. So it's got a, it's short cycle or short circuit that cycle that will run. I'm gonna transition now and talk about some of our other projects within this project plan. We also have within this project plan the goal to replace the six inch sanitary sewer that's in an alley kind of off of Farmer's Alley. Existing six inch sanitary sewer near Farmer's Alley.
This is actually Exchange, it's a branch of Exchange Place that goes off towards the east, has a history of failures and capacity deficiencies. It does not mean, does not meet modern design standards and the sewers experienced multiple backups, structural deterioration, and has interrupted service to public facing buildings and, you know, has caused, you know, potential health risks to the public when that sewer overflows in that highly concentrated area of density downtown. That project would involve replacing about seventy linear feet of six inch sanitary sewer with eight inch sewer. The project's scope includes installation of new manholes and new service laterals to serve the adjacent buildings and that project would restore capacity and reliability within some critical downtown infrastructure. Transitioning now to talk about another project within our project plan, that is the Kleinstock Preserve Sanitary Sewer Project. The Kleinstock Preserve has had several sanitary sewer overflows due to structural deficiencies in an existing sewer system, including some drop pipes and improper slope root intrusion. Also has been subject to vandalism. This is a sewer that dates back to nineteen twenty-nine and has significant structural defects associated with it. So this project would rehabilitate the existing sanitary sewer and infrastructure within that Kleinstock Preserve. It would address the pipe localized repairs at pipe sections and some structural repairs and pipe replacements in areas where we've got improper slope. We'd also increase access to that sewer with a new twelve foot maintenance path off of sterns, so that would enable larger vehicles. The sewer equipment cleaning machines would be able to come off of sterns and access that sewer. That project would minimize environmental disruption while improving system functionality, providing sustainable and minimal invasive solution to prevent future S S Os. So we're talking about examined alternatives of no action. So we've kind of gone through the projects. We've talked about the projects. We've talked about some of the justification and what some of those alternatives are. We're also now gonna look at cases where no action could be looked at as an alternative. In terms of the dryer and energy recovery system, no action does not address our escalating disposal costs, which right now exceed thirteen and a half million dollars annually. No action with that project would also continue to impact environment in terms of greenhouse gas emissions and as well as odors within our neighborhoods directly adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. This also provides a future risk and sustainability in terms of cost management as our ability to operationalize those costs would be, you know, borne just on our landfilling of biosalads. So we would be subject to cost increases into the future. The dryer only, if we looked at that as an option and that did no action for that, that would not, again, totally address our disposal costs. It'd only hit about seventy percent reduction in disposal costs and we would have a greater environmental impact because now we're heating biosalads and we're, you know, not mitigating those emissions like we would with the E R S project. And it'd also fail to address the ongoing issue that we had anticipate increase in tipping fees. We're also gonna talk about now the examined alternative of no action for that six inch sewer on Farmer's Alley and that Kleinstock Preserve. So no action on these two projects would, you know, result in continued sanitary sewer overflows, operational and public health risk, you know, in from those overflows and, you know, would not address future failures, both in that downtown sewer and at that Kleinstock Nature Preserve sewer. Another look at a examined alternatives would be optimization. Optimization is, you know, taking existing systems and optimizing the performance of that. So this project component would optimize the performance of existing biosalads by implementing dryers with E R S thermal solution. The current landfill disposal method with an integrated energy efficient solution. The optimization of dryer only project would decrease the mass by seventy percent, improving handling efficiency and will enhance operational reliability and long term disposal costs, optimizing sustainability of biosalads treatment at the Calm Zoo Water Reclamation Plant. Optimize performance of the six inch sewer replacement to a new eight inch sewer will enhance system reliability and restore capacity to accommodate current future wastewater flows. And Kleinstock Preserve is kind of the same thing. When we address the structural issues and rehabilitate the infrastructure to address structural deficiencies such as drop pipes, backfall and root intrusion and vandalism, then will enhance our performance into the future. Another examined alternative would be regionalization. With the dryer and E R S, we are providing that regional support in terms of being able to accept other materials from other agencies or other wastewater treatment plants that either are facing challenges with P F A or facing challenges with weather contamination. The city would have the ability to provide a regional solution for, for others. With a dryer, that option would not expand the capabilities of the region but would improve overall operational efficiency by reducing transportation costs by the K W R P and existing regional partners. Regionalization is not really associated with these projects. For the downtown sewer in Kleinstock, the sewers are not impacted whether we look at a regional approach or not. So this is a kind of a breakdown. I don't know if everybody can see. The detail gets kind of small here. But we're looking at all the different cost alternatives for the dryer and E R S, Farmer's Alley, Kleinstock, and then we're kind of calculating out a net present worth. A net present worth is a little bit of a unique number. It's, it's not the number of what something is totally today. It references all kind of the future value, including cost, operations, maintenance, and everything else over its entire, entire life. So the end of the conclusion is that the, the monetary analysis compares all these costs for each alternative over the twenty year planning period and represents all recommendations, which is the dryer and E R S for that best solution, the rehabilitation for Farmer's Alley or the replacement of the sewer for Farmer's Alley, and the rehabilitation of the sewer for Kleinstock. We're now gonna talk about how our examined alternatives impact the environment, public health, and other factors. I'm not gonna read off all these factors here, but, you know, essentially these all, all these points have to be taken into consideration when we're looking at some of these alternatives and deciding whether or not to move forward with the project. In summary, we're looking at historical and archaeological details, geological, cultural, social, recreational. A lot of that is done by consultants and that might have constraints, so that we might find that we're working in an area that has some historic features and that we've got to preserve those features. There's an example of that. We did work on Westonage Avenue this last year and we ran into some historically significant archaeological discoveries where we had to stop work and preserve that area. So these, the same approach would be taken to these projects as well. A lot of these details require further study and further analysis. Air quality, there's further permitting that has to go into that. We don't have all that information in front of us today, but all these items will be investigated, permitted, or mitigated to make sure that we're adhering to all federal, state, and local laws. Major environmental impacts, expected result from alternatives must be compared. So no impacts are anticipated for our work within the K W R P. That's a site that's only been the K W R P. It's only been the wastewater plant. There are some historic areas around Farmer's Alley. We're looking into that. We're also looking into Kleinstock in terms of historic areas around that site. So these investigations like I talked about will, will have consultants go into the details to make sure that we're doing the proper historical preservation review for those items. Environmental in terms of impacts resulted from construction. So we've got typical construction impact. We're talking about large vehicles, you know, generation of dust, noise, that sort of thing. In terms of endangered species, there's five federally threatened species identified in Calm Zoo County. So we're gonna make sure that areas of our work are protected and that we're not gonna work in areas where there's, you know, threatened species. You know, this really deals more with Kleinstock Preserve than it does with the wastewater treatment plant. There's not a lot of, you know, natural features at the wastewater treatment plant itself. It's more where the work occurs, like in Kleinstock, for example. Construction material, energy consumption. So, you know, when these products are made, there's energy that goes into those inputs and that's, you know, part of our just human life cycle, if you will. So that creates short term impacts, but it does, you know, create, you know, overall long term benefits for the, for the community. So any, the main negative impacts related to construction work for the proposed project, these can be minimized through efficient and economically effective design and construction. Air pollution control equipment, noise control, a proposal alternative will require labor, time, materials, money, and energy for construction that are irreversible. That being said, all the construction that would happen would be permitted. It would follow everything, including soil erosion control parameters. So everything is, is done to minimize our impacts as much as possible. In terms of cost, the dryer and E R S, that has a estimated construction cost of about a hundred ninety-four million. The replacement of the six inch sewer on Farmer's Alley has an estimated construction cost of three hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. And the Kleinstock Preserve sanitary sewer overflow work would be about two point one million. Altogether, we're looking at about a hundred ninety-six point eight million dollars of, of projects. And we've got some alternatives shown there to see, you know, what the difference is between them. The real difference really is the dryer and E R S. If we chose that alternative, that's a hundred and five million as composed, as compared to a hundred ninety-four million. We did wanna show you some cost uncertainty curves in terms of what we look at for future landfill rates. So this helps to inform, you know, kind of where that cost or payback period would be for that dryer and E R S project. We see that between twenty nineteen and where we are today, our, our disposal costs increased from four and a half million dollars a year to thirteen and a half million dollars a year. We don't know where the future is gonna take us, so we've got kind of a low end, medium, and a high end in terms of what those rate impacts look, look like. So there is, we do acknowledge there is some variability there with that. Rate impacts, we're required to talk about rate impacts in terms of R E Us. An R E U is a residential equivalent unit, which would be measured by like a typical family of four household that uses, you know, about fifty-one point three cubic meters of water per, per billion period. That household would see a increase for all these projects of about twelve dollars per, per month for all this work. So a hundred ninety-six million dollars of work would relate to about twelve point six six dollars per month, about, you know, twelve and a half dollars per R E U per month for that. per REU per month for that. REUs are different in terms of, like, what does a factory pay? A factory might be several hundred REUs, so they would pay a lot more. A typical house, like we said, would be about $12.66 a month. And at that time, I will conclude my portion of the presentation, and we'll open the floor for any comments anybody may have. Questions or comments?
With the Kleinstock project, you mentioned coming off of Sterns Avenue. That's different than what's in the plan. The plan is coming off Chevy Chase. Is that a change, or...?
The plan does show coming off, there's an existing trail that comes off Chevy Chase that kind of goes into the park, and it doesn't really have a way out. So we've got to have a way to have vehicles either turn around and come back out or to come in off Sterns. The city has right-of-way off Sterns that goes into the preserve, so that could be an option that we could consider to get vehicles in and out so that we can kind of go in and come back out, so we don't get stuck out there and have to turn around and come out.
Okay, so it's different than what's in the plan that's online, because that's not shown in there?
Right, it's not finalized, that's just, it could be an option.
And I think that right-of-way half was deeded to the neighboring property, so I think it's only half a right-of-way. I don't know if that's wide enough for what your need is.
Correct, yeah, 33 feet. It's 33 feet. We need about 12. So either it's, we build up the road with Chevy Chase Route, which is, you know, in the plan, and we have a turnaround, or we cut that Sterns plan in, that's still, I'd say, an option if either one of those could work.
Good evening. So I have heard you on this one before. I've seen this information, and I want to say thank you for looking for other funds to try to address the issues of odor that people in our community has talked about, and I will talk to you on another date about looking for funding for the residents who will have to come up with money to be able to pay for the sewers that goes from the sidewalk to their home. This is showing that it's aging, and the city needs to do it, so I'm very happy that you are, you're looking at alternative methods to keep costs down in the city, but I hope that you will look at for funding for the residents who can't afford to be able to replace those sewer lines. So thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
I'll keep talking then. Another Kleinstock question. I think it was back in 2014, that Chevy Chase Trail was improved for this purpose, but there's a stormwater outfall that causes significant erosion along that whole trail. Is that going to be improved? I just, I worry that the city is going to spend money on this trail, and then it's just going to keep eroding year after year, and it brings a lot of debris into the Kleinstock marsh, so it's problematic. I've met with city staff about it before, but is that something that can be addressed as part of this?
Yeah, I think the goal is when that, either roadway is, that Chevy Chase roadway, when that's addressed, that that's addresses a complete, you know, road surface, including cross culverts, drainage, ditching, you know, all that kind of stuff, while respecting where it's at. It's a, you know, urban walking trail through a preserve that has been part of our community since the 1920s, I believe, maybe even further back than that. So it's got a lot of culture and history with it, and it's something that's really used by the neighborhood, so it's not, it can't be built like we build like a highway or, you know, a driveway into a business park. It's going to have to reflect the character and design of the community it serves while also being able to transport those sewer maintenance vehicles in and out of the site. So yes, that's part of it, and that's been part of the access issue too, that when those rains happen and that road gets washed out, then those sewer response vehicles can't get in there. And so if we build the roadway correctly and address the erosion and we address the stormwater issues, we can get the vehicles in there. So yeah, that's going to be all part of this work.
Great, thank you. And my name is Erin Fuller. I'm with the stewards of Kleinstock. We're a nonprofit organization that helps take care of the preserve, and I'm with Tom Staubner, who's with Western Michigan University. So, you know, as you move forward, I think we'd both love to work with you to do just what you said, to, you know, accomplish what the city needs from an access standpoint while respecting the property and its existing use, so thank you.
Sure, yeah, thank you very much. I don't see any further, oh, we got another comment?
Sorry, one last, one question regarding the biosolids project. So you mentioned that with the preliminary design, you will be generating excess heat potentially from the biosolids project and the dryer, so then you also might have the capacity to bring in extra sludge from the additional communities? So if that's within the plan, that means that you will have the capacity to offset some of the costs of operational heating of the wastewater-driven plant as well? Is that part of the discussions?
Yeah, that's correct. So we haven't finalized all the engineering on all those aspects, so we don't really have a firm way to quantify what that looks like. We do know that there's going to be some excess heat, and so we're looking, the engineers are working on, you know, what to do with that. Is that auxiliary building heating? Is that, can that be used for snowmelt around the site itself to cut down on use of salt to help the environment? So there's a lot of different things we're looking at in terms of what that could be used for. I don't know if we're going to have enough excess heat to power like a mini turbine or ranking turbine to provide like electrical use in the site. It's not a lot, it's not going to be, you know, able to run the whole wastewater plant. It would be something that would be like building-specific or site-specific that would help with those offsets. In terms of the cost, like if other users are using it, certainly, that's a way to help offset costs as well. So, you know, something that we did highlight in the presentation is this unit's ability to destroy PFAS. So that's something that's, you know, really novel in terms of processes for wastewater across the state of Michigan, is that we're going to be one of the few plants that can actually destroy PFAS. So depending on where we go with PFAS legislation in the future, Michigan already has a lot of rules on it. We've got federal rules coming down. So in terms of other treatment plants, they're going to agricultural lands now that might not be the future for all those plants, so there might be some need for some other treatment plants to come here to Kalamazoo, and those costs would be, you know, reflected on those users, so they would have to pay for that use, which would then help lower the cost for everybody else who uses the system. So thank you, thank you for those comments. So I don't see any further comments. We did receive two comments written that came into the city clerk's office, so I'm not going to go into all the detail of them. They will be in the project plan, they will be available. One of the comments had to deal with air quality, and a comment about burning biosalads would potentially decrease air quality in Kalamazoo. I want to address that to say that, you know, first of all, this is a very new technology. It is not just simple burning of biosalads that is, you know, oblique technologies of the 1930s, is far different from what we have today. Combustion temperatures are completely different. Some of those old incinerator processes operated at 1,400 degrees Fahrenheit. This process would operate above 1,800 degrees Fahrenheit. It's a clean burn process that has advanced air pollution controls and emission controls on it, including selective catalytic reduction, and so there's a lot of technology that we have today that are going to go into this system to ensure that we're not going to degrade air quality. One thing that does have to happen, that's the next steps into the future, is that we have to apply for and receive air permit to install from the state of Michigan, so we will apply for that with Eagle. There is a public comment period for that, and there will be a public hearing for that process as well. So this is something that's going to have to follow regulatory requirements, regulatory standards, and we're not going to be permitted to install something that's going to degrade the air quality of the community, so I can share that with you. Another comment dealt with, it was on behalf of the sewers at Kleinstock, you know, overall support of the sanitary sewer project and all, and brings up concerns about, you know, the stormwater erosion and some of the other issues, so I think it was kind of along the same comment there. So I think we've addressed that comment, and thank you for providing those. At this time, there are no further comments. We will conclude the public hearing, and we'll end the meeting for today. So thank you very much.